Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Kettering City Council. Today's date is April 11, 2023. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your head for an invocation. Dear Lord, we pray for unity. We have come together as a group united in passion and purpose. Help us maintain unity as we discuss certain matters and implement projects. We pray for open hearts and minds that will promote and accept better ideas. We seek your honor in everything we do and say, and we ask for your blessings for our community and for all who need our prayers and assistance. Amen. Next, I'd like to recognize our Miami Valley Communications Council TV operator, Mike Suproni. Mike, thanks for your assistance as usual. Mr. Duke has an excused absence this evening. I'd like to move for approval of the minutes. I'll call on Mrs. Fisher for a motion.
Your Honor, I have reviewed both the workshop and council minutes for the 28th of March, and I do find them order, and I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, the motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? Being none, call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Kleipas.
Yes.
Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Duval.
Yes.
Mayor Laner.
Yes. Okay. We do have a number of proclamations this evening, which explains why we have a lot of people in the audience. When I call your, if you would come here, we will hand you the proclamation that you are to receive. I will tell, I will announce who's receiving it. And then after I hand it to you and they're done reading it, you may go to the podium and say a few words if you would like. Okay? So we're going to start with an appointment. This is to the Volunteer Advisory Council for Richard Honeywell for a term ending 12/31/25. Mr. Honeywell in the room tonight?
He's not here.
No. Okay. All right. So that is the appointment, and I'd ask for motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. Anyone opposed? Okay. Seeing none, congratulations, Mr. Honeywell. Thank you for your service. We'll now move on to proclamations. The first one is for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. Chief Protsman will be receiving this. And Ms. Duval, could you please read it?
Yes. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time requiring police, fire, or emergency medical services to respond, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of law enforcement, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Kettering Public Safety Communication Center, and whereas public safety dispatchers are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency service, and whereas public safety dispatchers are the single vital link for our law enforcement and fire personnel by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety, and whereas our public safety dispatchers have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the last, in the past year. Now, therefore, Peggy Laner, Mayor of the City of Kettering, Ohio, on behalf of city council and the community, do hereby proclaim April 9 through the 15, 2023, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the City of Kettering, Ohio, in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe.
Thank you. And Chief, on behalf of council, I present you this proclamation, and thank you for all of the work you do. Okay? Then, oh yeah. That you were walking back that way. Cut you off.
Your Honor, this is a special week for us because these are a group of people who don't get noticed very often. They're certainly the first line when somebody talks to somebody when they're in trouble and need assistance. They're certainly are the lifeline for the police officers and firefighters when they're in harm's way. I don't think people realize the stress that they're under. I don't think they realize the stress that they deal with when they have somebody on the phone that they're trying to get help to. I also think that they don't understand the stress that they have to deal with when that person hangs up the phone, or an officer, or a firefighter's communication over the radio goes blank, and they don't know what's going on. So they're tremendous people. We are very proud of them, and we greatly appreciate this. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I, I think that's particularly timely today because with some of the recent shootings, there's been a lot of focus on the response from the police departments, and so much of it is in the hands of that dispatcher. And I think we all got a bit deeper appreciation just for how terrifying that may be at times. So thank you very much for that. Our next proclamation is for Arbor Day, and Mr. Kleipas, I think you're going to read that, and Mary Beth Odell with Parks and Rec, cultural arts director, will be accepting the proclamation.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I have a proclamation this evening. Whereas Arbor Day is a special day set aside for planting of trees and is observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas Arbor Day calls attention to the need for conservation, stressing how essential it is to maintain and protect the beauty and usefulness of our natural forest, as well as importance of trees to conserve land in all areas, and whereas Arbor Day in Kettering is celebrated by planting trees at the Habitat Environmental Center and Southdale Woods on Saturday, April 15, 2023, which is part of Kettering's annual Arbor Day Tree Fest activities, and whereas because of the city's commitment to enhance the scenic beauty of our community, the City of Kettering was awarded the Tree City USA Growth Award by the National Arbor Day Foundation for demonstrating environmental improvements for higher-level tree care, and whereas the continuation of planting trees within our community will enhance the quality of life for all residents and add to the scenic wonders that we will enjoy for generations to come. Now, therefore, Peggy Laner, Mayor of the City of Kettering, Ohio, on behalf of city council and the community, does hereby proclaim April 15 to be Arbor Day in the City of Kettering, Ohio, and urge all citizens to recognize the importance of planting trees as the embodiment of life and for the economic and social growth of the community. Signed this 11th day of April, 2023, Mayor Peggy Laner in Kettering, Ohio.
Thank you, Mr. Kleipas. And Mary Beth Odell is going to receive the proclamation, and thank you.
Few words.
Yeah, a few words. I didn't forget you.
Well, thank you, Mayor and council, and really a tremendous shout out to Gary Schussler and the Parks Department for all the marvelous work they do day in and day out to keep our tree canopy top-notch in this country, or in this country, in the city, specifically after the tremendous loss of our, through the Emerald Ash Bore and all of our ash trees. But more importantly also, Carrie Miles, all her work that she's done with the Environmental Education Program, which is a great segue into the two fantastic events we have planned for Saturday. Obviously, the proclamation talked about Tree Fest from 9:00 to noon. All people are invited to come out to the Habitat in Southdale Park to participate. It is our 16th year for that event, and that is another great kudos to the Environmental Education Program that we have. The other event which follows that is just another tree event is Tree Love. As you know, that we created a tree committee about a year ago, and part of lots of the tree committees in southwest Ohio have partnered with local breweries to celebrate Arbor Day. And we didn't want to be left out, so Udora has partnered with us to sponsor this event from 1 to 5. It's also a continuation of Tree Fest, but will be more, will be very family-friendly. The kitchen will be open. 10% of the proceeds from your food and beverage sales will go toward our new heritage tree program that will raise money to celebrate trees that have distinct factors in our community, and the tree committee is working on that process as well. So thank you so much for the Arbor Day proclamation, but again, great kudos to Gary Schussler, Carrie Miles, for their tremendous work. Thank you.
Thank you. And those trees are so important to this community, and so keep, keep up the great work. Our next proclamation is for Arab American Heritage Month, and Jill Hall is going to read that one, and Tony Masood, did I see Tony here?
Tony's up.
There he is. Oh, he's hiding. He'll be accepting the proclamation this evening.
I'll read it, and then if you want to come up to accept it, that might be more comfortable for you. Whereas throughout the United States, the month of April is recognized as Arab American Heritage Month to celebrate the culture and the many contributions of Arab Americans and that have had on various aspects of American society, and whereas Arab Americans have made valuable contributions to many aspects of American society in medicine, law, business, education, technology, government, military service, and culture, and whereas since migrating to America, men and women of Arab descent have shared their rich culture and traditions with neighbors and friends while also setting fine examples of model citizens and public servants, and whereas they brought with them to America their resilient family values, strong work ethic, dedication to education, and diversity in faith and creed that have added strength to our great democracy, and Arab Americans, whereas Arab Americans have enriched our society by sharing in the entrepreneurial American spirit that makes our nation free and prosperous, and whereas the history of Arab Americans in the U.S. remains neglected or defaced by misconceptions, bigotry, and anti-Arab hate in the form of crimes and speech, and whereas Arab American issues such as civil rights abuses, harmful stereotyping and bullying must be combated in the forms of education and awareness, and whereas Arab Americans share the desire to see a peaceful and diverse society where every individual is treated equally and feels safe, and whereas the incredible contributions and heritage of Arab Americans have helped build a better nation. Now, therefore, Mayor Peggy Laner, on behalf of the City of Kettering and the city council, do hereby proclaim April 2, 2023, to be Arab American Heritage Month in the City of Kettering, Ohio. We are proud to celebrate and honor the contributions and heritage of Arab Americans. And then it also contains her signature, and it's ready for you.
Okay. Come on down, Tony.
Good to see you.
She's got it right there.
Yeah. Thank you. It's great to see you.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay.
I think this proclamation says it all. Thank you. Very proud to be an Arab American, and I want to thank the mayor and the council members. You did a great job. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Our next proclamation is for Community Development Week, and Bob Scott's going to read that one, and it will be presented, be accepted by Tom Rubelard with Planning and Development Director.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my pleasure to read this proclamation. Whereas the week of April 10 through 14, 2023, has been designated as National Community Development Week by the National Community Development Association to celebrate community development block grant, CDBG programs, and whereas the community block grant program has existed since 1975 to provide local governments with resources to develop viable urban communities by providing decent housing and a suitable living environment, and expanding economic opportunities principally for persons of low and moderate income, and whereas the community development block program has strengthened America's communities such as the City of Kettering by addressing pressing neighborhood and human service needs and having significant impact on our local economy through job creation and retention, physical development, and improved tax base. And whereas the City of Kettering has effectively administered and customized its community development block grant program for over 40 years to implement various programs and projects in this, in the areas of affordable housing, economic development, public facilities, and public works improvements, homelessness, and planning that has contributed to the improvement of the physical, economic, and social conditions in our city, and whereas the City of Kettering is committed to addressing discrimination in the community by supporting programs to educate the public about the right to equal housing opportunities and to plan partnership efforts with other organizations to help assure every American of their right to fair housing. Now, therefore, Peggy Laner, Mayor of the City of Kettering, Ohio, on behalf of city council and the community, do hereby proclaim April 10 through 14, 2023, to be Community Development Week in the City of Kettering, Ohio, and urge all citizens to join in recognizing community development prog, programs and the important role they play in our community. Signed, Peggy Laner, Mayor of the City of Kettering, Ohio.
Thank you, Bob. Tom, come forward. Send that to you. There you go. Thank you, and give us a few words.
Thank you, Mayor Laner and members of the city council. It's very important that we recognize that this week is the Community Development Block Grant Week. This is the 49th year of celebrating the Community Development Block Grant Program. Through the CDBG program, we do run economic development programs, housing, infrastructure, and public service projects. To celebrate that, we invite you to join the City of Kettering for the celebration of Community Development Week with a Breakfast with the Businesses. This will be held on April 14 from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00, right here in the Government Center, downstairs in the Deeds Room. There'll be a, sorry, breakfast with local businesses, testimonials, some ceremonial checks presented by members of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and the State of Ohio Office of Community Development. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, our final proclamation for this evening is for National Volunteer Week. Don Kirchner with Volunteer Administrator will be making a presentation in a minute, but first Jackie Fisher is going to read the proclamation.
I have a proclamation. Whereas National Volunteer Week was established in 1974 and has grown exponentially each year, drawing endorsements of all subsequent U.S. Presidents, Governors, Mayors, and other respected elected officials. It is a time to say thank you and honor the millions of people who changed the world by volunteering. It's about inspiring, recognizing, and encouraging people to seek out imaginative ways to engage in their communities. And whereas National Volunteer Week celebrates the power of volunteers to tackle and to be a positive force that transforms the word, world, and whereas during this week, all over our nation, volunteers will be recognized for their commitment to serve, service, demonstrating that every individual has the power to make a difference in creating healthy, strong, and vibrant communities. And whereas each year, we recognize the people and causes that inspire service by thanking volunteers who lend their time, talent, and voice to make a difference in our community during these times of triumph and times of adversity. And whereas our nation was founded on a spirit of volunteerism, and talents and energies of American volunteers are one of our nation's greatest assets and certainly one of Kettering's finest resources. And whereas the City of Kettering Volunteer Program has been blessed for 44 years with volunteers who are committed to making Kettering the place people are proud to call home. Now, therefore, Peggy Laner, Mayor of the City of Kettering, and you're definitely, your city council and community, do hereby proclaim April 16, 20, to 22, 2023, to be National Volunteer Week in the City of Kettering, Ohio, and we all urge our fellow citizens to volunteer in our community as we continue to come together to bring about positive change, and it is signed by our great mayor.
No, thank you. Okay. Now, this is going to be received by Don Kirchner, and then you're going to stay here for a special. We'll give you this one, and you can say a few words on that, and then don't go anywhere.
Thank you, Mayor Laner and city council, for the proclamation. As was stated in that proclamation, this is the 44th year of the City of Kettering Volunteer Program. As one of the first local government volunteer programs in the nation, this program continues to be a model for other communities. National Volunteer Week is an opportunity to recognize and thank the volunteers who lend time, talent, voice, and support to causes they care about and to improve their communities. Volunteers inspire us to put the needs of others ahead of our own. This week, we're encouraged to show our appreciation to these generous individuals with thanks, be it a handshake, a written note, or any general act of kindness. These simple acts perpetuate the goodwill fostered by those, that generosity. The City of Kettering is fortunate to have a community of individuals driven by passion and kindness and so willing to help throughout the community in so many ways. They're enhancing daily operations, expanding the success of our programs and many events, and in strengthening our neighborhoods. The Kettering Volunteer Program is successful not only because of the dedication of the volunteers who engaged, but because of the city staff that work alongside them, and because of the leadership of our city council and our mayor. Our appreciation goes out to all of you for your collaboration and support.
Thank you very much. Now, Don has the privilege tonight of announcing and presenting something special to our volunteer, a couple of volunteers here in the community. We have two. One is for adult, and the other one is for a member of our youth, and I'm going to let, take it away. Tell us who they are.
Yeah, so I have the honor of presenting the Mayor's Award for Volunteer Service this year. It was created in 1983 as a way to honor outstanding volunteers making valuable contributions throughout the community in a variety of volunteer services and in many categories. The recipients of this award must either be a resident of Kettering, or their volunteer service should have to happen in Kettering. Tonight, in celebration of National Volunteer Week, we are honored to have a youth and adult award. However, our youth award winner unfortunately is traveling out of state this week, so she's unable to be here, but our adult volunteer is here this evening, and I'm going to say a few words about Al Fulenkamp. So as many of you know, Al Fulenkamp was the Assistant City Manager who retired in 2014, and despite his retirement, that was in big quotes, Al continues to be a representative of the city as an active volunteer and an ambassador. Al enjoys being a mail courier between city buildings, collects and delivers batteries for recycling, and has been active at the Great Miami River Watershed Project, and represents the City of Kettering as a member of the Greater Dayton Regional Transit Authority Board of Trustees. In addition, Al serves as a Chair of the Kettering Sister Cities Committee and is a member of the Kettering Development Corporation. Al has always been willing to serve the city in any capacity. His nominator states that Al's contribution of time and talents has made every organization he serves a better place. And a member of staff noted that no matter when I'm having a bad day, Al can come into a room and his infections, infectious smile brightens my day and everybody else's. Thank you, Al. We are so very lucky to have you.
I appreciate this award. It's nice. It's one of those things, you can work for Kettering for 38 years and you still can't leave it. It just keeps pulling you back in, and that's a wonderful thing. A few things I did want to say, though, is that volunteerism, whereas it's greatly supported here, and it's a wonderful thing, it so often starts with the family. You know, my parents were volunteers. My wife volunteers. She's in more things than I care to even think about. So busy with all of that. But it's so nice because City of Kettering as an organization was very supportive of volunteer efforts as I was working here, and encouraged us to get involved in professional societies and those type of things. And so that carries through. And likewise, we've been very blessed, and through council's wisdom, to make sure that we've had great volunteer coordinators through the years, starting with Joyce Connor and Bonnie Piddle, and Mary Lou Randolph, and now Don Kirchner. So for that, we're very thankful. So I'd love to thank you all, and I appreciate it very much, and I'm sure we'll be, continue to be seeing you here, there, and everywhere. Thank you.
And, and I, I'd just like to add, I just can't imagine the City of Kettering without Al and Sue Fulenkamp. I mean, they are really there for, for everything. So thank you so much.
And unfortunately, since Annabelle Hacker is unable to be here, I will say that we will feature her and Al both in the upcoming summer edition of Contact with Kettering, so you'll have the opportunity to see her, her photo there. But I'll just read a quick bio so everybody gets an idea of why she was nominated and why she won. So Annabelle Hacker is a senior at Alter High School and is a president of the Key Club. Over the course of her high school career, Annabelle has volunteered in a variety of capacities. During her freshman year, she volunteered for a summer program in Appalachia. She's coached youth volleyball for several years, has volunteered at the Habitat Environmental Center for summer camps and with many special events, and has promoted the Gym Project as part of the Hope Squad at Alter. The Gym Project was an art contest promoting suicide awareness, and as a member of the Hope Squad, Annabelle made herself available to students who suffer from anxiety or might need to talk. Her nominator described her as "a young lady of impeccable integrity, kindness, and authentic leadership." We congratulate Annabelle, and we are grateful to have her as part of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Don, and let Annabelle, let Annabelle know she's welcome to come to a future meeting. We'd be glad to introduce her. So thank you. She is a remarkable young lady. We have a couple of other special presentations tonight, and the first one is the Fire Department Citizenship Award, and that's going to be given by Chief Robbins, if you'd like to come down to the podium and make that presentation. We're celebrating a lot of great people tonight, that's for sure.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. On October 13, 2020, 2022, Kettering Fire Department Engine 36, Medic 36, and Battalion 30 were dispatched to report of a possible full arrest at the Kettering Rec Center. Crews arrived on scene to find a 75-year-old male patient lying on the ground after playing basketball. Upon arrival of the crews, they found Kettering Rec Center staff Lindsey Curry, Tiffany Williams, and Scott Seaman providing CPR to the patient. To include rescue breathing with a protective mask, they also applied the AED, or an automatic external defibrillator. They told KFD crews that the patient had been shocked six to seven times by the AED. Other bystanders initially began CPR and called for rec center staff to help. The three staff members reacted quickly and took over patient care, calling 911. This EMS alarm embodies the chain of survival for emergency medical response, starting with citizens and city staff taking the initiative to attend a CPR class, calling 911, emergency medical dispatch, trained dispatchers, emergency medical services, and the hospital care after EMS transport. These members showed what training and a sense of duty can accomplish. The Kettering Fire Department Citizenship Award will be given to Lindsey Curry, Tiffany Williams, and Scott Seaman for their heroic actions at the Kettering Rec Center saving a life. The award criterion reads as follows. It's awarded to citizens other than members of the Kettering Fire Department who distinguish themselves by performing acts or duties in a manner deemed above that normally required or expected and sufficient to set them apart from their peers at the scene of an emergency. All three definitely performed an act in a manner deemed above normally expected and set them apart from their peers. For this, we are pleased to award them the Kettering Fire Department Citizenship Award. Their awards state, and I don't have my glasses, "for distinguished acts of unselfishness and citizenship by taking action which contributed to saving the life of a citizen of our community. Your actions embody the citizenship that this award was designed to recognize for lifesaving actions on October 13, 2022." Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Go ahead and get in. Go ahead and get in.
Thank you so much. And not to be outdone, Chief Protsman, Police Chief of the City of Kettering is going to announce the Police Department Citizenship Award. Top that.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to call up Matthew Lynch, please. Your Honor, I think we all know that this city is very special. And I think we all know that one of the reasons it is is because of our citizens care about each other and they look out for each other. When law enforcement or fire department aren't around, there are still citizens who are willing to get involved and to help each other. And that's exactly what Mr. Lynch did on December 24th of 2022. At 11:37 PM, he was leaving a friend's house when he noticed a subject lying on a snow-covered sidewalk next to a vehicle in 12-degree weather. The subject was laying in the dark in such a position where it would be difficult for passing motorists to have seen him. Mr. Lynch noticed him and called 911 after finding the subject unresponsive. Responding officers discovered the male subject was likely suffering from a narcotic overdose. And it was unknown how long he had been laying there. KFD responded and treated the subject with Narcan before transporting him to the hospital for further treatment. Hospital staff treated the subject for hypothermia and, as well as an overdose. Hospital staff stated the subject would likely have permanent damage to his body as a result of prolonged exposure to the cold. They also stated that without Mr. Lynch's attentiveness and going out of his way to check on this subject, it is unlikely he would have survived much more exposure in the 12-degree weather. Mr. Lynch, Kettering Police Department greatly appreciates what you did and thank you very much for your life-saving.
Great. Thank you very much. And thanks to all of you who have done so much. And so many people in this room that haven't received an award for what they've done, but they are there for each other. And that just makes this community awesome. We will now move along with our agenda. If you wish to leave at this time, please do so quietly. I just remind you that voices down here in the hall echo right back up, so. Thank you. I shouldn't have invited you to leave. You might have stayed. We have no public hearings this evening. This is the point in our agenda that anyone wishing to speak before council with any comments or new information about the legislation on tonight's agenda may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Speakers must state their name and address, and comments should be addressed to council. If you have comments that are not about the legislation on tonight's agenda, there will be an opportunity for those to be heard later in the meeting. Okay, I'd say since there's no one in the room. During public, the thing I gave you? Okay. I think it's at the end. Yeah. Okay. Public comments from us are at the end. That's all right. No problem. We will now move on to ordinances in second reading. I'd like to call in Mrs. Fisher to introduce the first one.
Your Honor, I do have an ordinance adopting the amended civil service rules for the City of Kettering. It is requested by the Human Resources Department, and I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Mr. Greason, do you want to make some comments?
Yes, Your Honor and members of council. This is a kind of a technical matter. When new positions are created or titles are added to the personnel ordinance, we need to ultimately amend our civil service rules to deem them either in the classified service or unclassified service. And the Civil Service Commission has accomplished that or recommended that, and we need to amend our rules to conform. So we will be amending by this action the civil service rules and placing the following positions. The Planning and Development Technician, the Equipment Mechanic 1 and 2, Lead Equipment Mechanic, Civilian Dispatch Supervisor, and Crime Analyst. The Technician, Equipment Mechanic 1 and 2, and Lead Equipment Mechanic positions in the classified service in the civil service rules, and the Civilian Dispatch Supervisor and Crime Analyst positions in the unclassified service.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Klepass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Your Honor, I have an ordinance this evening in second reading to rezone 2025 through 2061 East Dorothy Lane from Economic Development Overlay District Number 14 to B Business District Planning Commission Case Number PC 22-024, requested by Planning and Development Department. I move for its approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Robillard, would you like to make a comment?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. This particular business at 2025 and 2061 is a small strip commercial center just east of City Barbecue on Dorothy Lane near Delco Park. In order for the owner of that shopping center to make the improvements that they'd like, they need to remove the property out of the economic development overlay into the business district, which is much more flexible and allowing the owner to do what he'd like. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mr. Klepass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes. Okay. Now, moving on to resolutions. First one is going to be read by Mrs. Hall.
Mayor, I have a resolution appointing delegates to the Miami Valley Communications Council Aggregation Assembly. This request is being made by the City Manager's Office. I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Greason?
Yes, Your Honor. You recently adopted legislation that would authorize our participation in the Miami Valley Communications Council Electric and Gas Aggregation Program. To govern that aggregation program, the Communications Council has created an aggregation assembly. And each member government, all of the cities that are participating in this electric and gas aggregation program have the opportunity to appoint both a delegate to that assembly as well as an alternate delegate if the first delegate is not available. This resolution would place myself as the delegate on behalf of the City of Kettering, and Mr. Bergstreser is the alternate delegate. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any other questions? Seeing none? Call the roll.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Klepass?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the City Manager to accept a donation of carbon monoxide detectors from Firefighters and Company Federal Credit Union. Estimated cost $712.50 and requested by the Fire Department.
Move for approval? Move for approval?
Move for approval.
Second. Mr. Greason?
Yes, Chief Robbins can fill in if I miss anything. I'd welcome him to do that. But there are 50 detectors from this donation that will be intended for Kettering Fire Department to provide Kettering residents carbon monoxide detectors, those residents who are unable to afford to purchase one. So we're trying to get carbon monoxide detectors in the homes of some of our individuals who are less fortunate. Chief, you want to?
Okay. Take this opportunity to remind people that if they need a smoke detector in their home and they cannot afford it, that the city is more than happy to provide one of these for them, so. Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Klepass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall? Mayor Lehner?
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the City Manager to contract with Brumba Construction for Phase 3 of the Rosewood Arts Center renovation project. The estimated cost is $1,748,924. The amount budgeted was $1,415,000. This is being requested by the Public Service Department. I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Greason?
Yes, Your Honor, members of council. We've talked about the Rosewood project at length at different times. This project would move forward Phase 3 of the renovation project, which includes some remaining classroom space as well as the theater. There is, as articulated, as Ms. Duval referenced, the renovation project cost is estimated And there is a difference between what is budgeted and what is estimated. But you'll also recall that this project has been a partnership, an effort where we've not only had city budgeted funds, but also the efforts of the Kettering Park Foundation to raise money from foundation and private sources to help offset city monies to accomplish the important goal of renovating the Rosewood Project and expanding arts opportunities in our community. So we anticipate with the difference between what is budgeted and the estimated cost to be covered in two ways for this piece of the project. $333,924 from the Kettering Parks Foundation fundraising efforts and some underspending in other parts of the Parks Recreation and Cultural Arts Capital Improvement Project approved for 2023 in the amount of $31,627. And we'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have about this.
See, do I have any questions? Okay, go ahead and call the roll.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Klepass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the City Manager to use sealed bidding, competitive bargaining, and negotiated quotes indoor in an approved cooperative purchasing program to purchase furniture, fixtures, and equipment for the Phase 3 and theater portions of the Rosewood Arts Center renovation project. The estimated cost is $2,776,993. $276,000? How about that? $993, which is also what is budgeted in two different accounts. And it is requested by the Parks Recreation and Cultural Arts Department, and I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Greason?
Yes, Your Honor. Like the previous resolution allows us to move forward with the construction renovation of classrooms and the theater. But Ms. Odell will tell you, we can't accomplish great programming if we don't also have furniture, fixtures, and equipment. And so this resolution would allow us to use sealed bidding, competitive bargaining, and negotiated quotes to purchase that critical equipment for PRCA and the Rosewood Arts Center staff to do their jobs and welcome people into what's going to be a wonderful new theater. The project's estimated at $276,993. And likewise, this is, we couldn't move forward with this but for the efforts of the Kettering Park Foundation and their fundraising efforts, of which $141,246 of this will cover, of their fundraising efforts will help cover the cost of this budget item along with some underspending that we're going to plan in Parks Recreation and Cultural Arts CIP projects in the amount of $135,747. I'd invite Ms. Odell, who is so ably fundraised in partnership with the Parks Foundation, to add anything that she would like. And we'd be glad to answer any questions you might have. She's also welcome to add nothing if she likes.
Now that she's thoroughly blushing. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
No.
Okay. Can we go ahead and call the roll? Well, does anyone have any questions of Mr. Greason?
No.
Okay. All right, call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Klepass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes. And if anyone has any doubts about it, this is going to be a world-class facility when it's done. It's been a long time coming, but I see the light at the end of the tunnel. Thank you. You want to? Yes?
I'll go.
Yeah, I was about to.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to make supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Kettering, State of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2023. The estimated cost is $1,352,846.66. It's quite an estimated cost. Sounds right on the money. Requested by Finance Department, I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, and Mr. Greason?
Yes, Your Honor, members of council. We commonly accept grants for various programs and where the expenditures really take place over multiple years. The unspent balances, in this case from 2022, it's necessary to appropriate those unspent balances in 2023 so we can move forward with all the programmatic activity. The requests for supplemental appropriations in this case do not represent new spending. They're really just moving appropriations from one year fiscal year to the next. And so we've collected a number of those through various grant programs, some law enforcement grants, Special Grant Program Fund, cross both police, fire, and Parks and Recreation as well as the Capital Improvement Fund. Be glad to answer any questions that you have about any of these at your convenience.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Okay, go ahead and call the roll.
Mr. Klepass?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes. Okay. Ordinances in first reading, we have one. And I guess that will be Jill?
Yep. Your Honor, I have an ordinance in first reading to levy special assessments for the construction and repair of curbs, sidewalks, drive approaches, and related appurtenances for the Ford Boulevard improvements, Smithville to Woodman project. And this is city project number O2-140F. This is being requested by the Engineering Department.
Okay. And I think Mr. Bergstreser is taking this one.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is an ordinance in first reading this evening for a project that was completed in 2022, is improvements to Ford Boulevard between Smithville and Woodman. We have now completed the project and would like to move forward with the assessments for the concrete work on the project. These are property owner assessments as part of that project. We have completed the required public notice process. We did not receive any objections. We received no objections to the assessments from residents, and this is in first reading this evening. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Okay, that's first reading. All right, thank you. Certifications and petitions?
We did not, Your Honor, we did not have We did not, your honor, we did not have any certifications or petitions this evening.
Thank you. Managers' report and community update. Mr. Greason?
Yes, your honor, I wanted to cover one thing that I missed in discussing the supplemental appropriations. Earlier in the evening, we talked about the fire department. The resolution you adopted also included the $712, the appropriation for the $712 for the carbon monoxide donation, detector donation, and the Kettering Parks Foundation donations for the Rosewood furniture fixtures and equipment grant. So the funds necessary to move forward with the previously discussed Rosewood Arts Center projects. I apologize for not mentioning that with more specificity. Are there any questions that you may have about it?
No, no question.
Not seen any.
Okay. We're moving to the community update, and we're excited to just, we want to reemphasize there's a lot of things happening at the Frazes this summer with the hard work of the Parks Recreation and Cultural Arts staff. Just to mention a few opportunities, the Stronger Together Concert on Friday, May 19, Dustin Lynch, Thursday, June 1, and 38 Special and Lover Boy, if you're like me and you're an '80s kid, Saturday, June 3 at 8:00 p.m. We encourage you to get your tickets at the ticket office, the Frazes Fan Fair, which is at Town and Country, or certainly online through e-tix or by phone. One of the services our residents really enjoy as they spruce up their yards in the spring is the mulch that we make available. That will, that has started on April 10 to Kettering residents for free. You can pick it up at Indian Riffle Park located at 2801 East Stroop behind Tannenberg Kinnels. Compost and mulch in your truck, trailer, or other container during daylight hours seven days a week. The water rain replacement on East Dorothy Lane, so we want to touch base about this for a minute. You may have read about a little bit of a change in this, the maintenance of traffic related to this project that is different than what we've talked about before in this setting. That is, East Dorothy Lane needs to be closed through traffic from Far Hills to Schroyer April 10 through 14. So we're experiencing, started that this week, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. for the installation of water services onto the new water main. Residents that are directly impacted will have access to their driveways during the closure. Notice has been provided, and certainly recommended detour signage will be in place. If you have any questions about this, we'd be glad to try to address them. Essentially, the service connects between the main and the residences require the closure instead of the maintenance of traffic, and while this project is being performed by the county, we're coordinating with them and believe that this daytime activity and that necessitates the road closure is probably better than having completed that project at nighttime, which might have been a little more efficient but would have disrupted a residential area. Be glad to answer any questions you have about it.
Anyone have any questions? Okay. Thank you very much for your report.
Yeah, a couple other things, mayor. You mentioned Tree Fest, and I won't elaborate on that. Our ever-popular spring leaf pickup, if you didn't get finished in the fall, the spring leaf pickup begins Monday, April 17. And lastly, please file your taxes, not lastly, file your taxes by April 18. City staff is available to help residents if they need it. And a couple other last-minute or last things, Prescription Drug Takeback Day. The Kettering Police Department will host the DEA Prescription Drug Takeback Day on Saturday, April 22 from 10 to 2 in the lobby of the police department. We urge people to, you know, clean out their medicine cabinets and be a part of getting drugs out of houses that you no longer need and get those prescriptions properly disposed of. And lastly, the Kettering Block Party, which I'm eager to participate in for the first time, will be at Lincoln Park in the Frazes Pavilion on May 31 from 6 to 8.
Now you are done, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Well.
Well, okay. Now is the time, if anyone wished to speak to council on non-legislative matters, this is the time for them to do so. If anyone wishes to speak to us, come on down. Gee, watch the stampede.
Anyone else?
That will conclude it. We will now move on to council reports, and we will be starting with.
Maybe me?
Maybe you?
I could go.
Okay.
So, since last council meeting, I have been running around our city, reaching out to a lot of wonderful owners of businesses to collect silent auction gifts, and so the mayor is having a party with a purpose on May 13, and so.
You're stealing my thunder, you know.
I'm sorry, but I will say that there's going to be all these awesome gift cards, awesome gift cards that'll be part of the silent auction, and I do believe that even if you don't go to the party, which hopefully we will see you at the party, there will be online bidding for those particular things. So I have, your honor.
Sure enough.
Thank you. Think everybody got in their mail today, a reminder that the Sister City Committee's annual meeting will be held on April 20, starting at 6:00 p.m. at Archer's, and it'd be a good way for celebrating Volunteer Week for you to come by and meet about 15 to 18 volunteers that are very active with the Sister City Committee, so I hope, hope all of you might be able to get over there. And little words, words of wisdom tonight are, did you know that local businesses reinvest nearly 70% of their profits back into local economy as opposed to those chain businesses that only reinvest about 43%? That's just one of the many reasons why it's so important to support local businesses in your, our community in Kettering. When local businesses succeed, Kettering thrives. Therefore, it's important to support our local businesses as much as possible. That's my words of wisdom. Thank you.
Buy local.
Okay.
Jill?
That's all I have, mayor.
Thank you.
My, I've been thinking a lot about the individuals that have suffered from gun violence the last couple weeks, and my heart is heavy thinking about the people who were killed yesterday in Louisville through gun violence, and two weeks ago, the children and adults who were killed in Nashville. Firearms is the number-one cause of death for children, and there's no other nation in the next 75 most developed nations that has firearms as a top cause of death. And I just want to again say, I find it macabre that our city, or rather, our state and federal leaders have done nothing to change the situation. Most Americans want gun safety laws, and the way that they've tied our hands locally to be able to do anything about it is just wrong and upsetting, and I hear about it often from people who are taking their kids to school, we heard about it this week from a constituent, and the fact that we're thinking about it, taking our kids to school is just unbelievable to me. So I wanted to say that. For anybody who might be listening, please continue to advocate that they implement some basic gun safety laws at the state level here. Somewhat along that lines, there is a Walk for Hope this weekend for mental health awareness for our children and youth, and that is at noon. Registration starts at 11:30, and will be around the city of Kettering. My family will be there, unfortunately, I'll be at my day job, but I know several council members will be there, and so glad that the school and the city is doing that. And I also want to give Mary Odell and Partners for Healthy Youth and our whole team a shout out. I was at our meeting right before this today. Partners for Healthy Youth is a, one of the first in the nation that's taking social, emotional learning out into the community from the school, using cues to help kids to remember how to bring good behavior and use the positive reinforcement models that are being done in the school, and we're inviting community members, churches, businesses to participate, and it's the first time that's happened, I think, in the country. And Mary and one of our leaders there participated in international symposium conferences, what have you, the last week, and we may be the first in the world doing this, which is super impressive for Kettering schools and our city, and makes me excited. Lastly, I apologize, we've all had a lot, to listen to a lot of things being read tonight, but we didn't do, we were, the city has written a lovely statement about the Armenian genocide that happened April 24th, since we had a number of proclamations. This was not made into a proclamation, but I was given this this evening about the Armenian genocide anniversary, and I will read it. "Tonight, we pause to remember the horrific acts that occurred during the Armenian genocide. Each year on April 24, we remember the lives of all those who died in the Ottoman-era Armenian genocide and recommit ourselves to preventing such an atrocity from ever again occurring. Beginning on April 24, 1915, with the arrest of Armenian intellectuals and community leaders in Constantinople by Ottoman authorities, one and a half million Armenians were deported, massacred, or marched to their deaths in a campaign of extermination. We honor the victims of the Meds Yegern so that the horrors of what happened are never lost to history, and remember, we remember so that we remain ever vigilant against the corrosive influence of hate in all its forms. Of those who survived, most were forced to find new homes and new lives around the world, including in the United States. With strength and resilience, the Armenian people survived and rebuilt their community. Over the decades, Armenian immigrants have enriched the United States in countless ways, but they have not, they have never forgotten the tragic history that brought so many of their ancestors to our shores, and we honor their story, we see their pain, and we affirm that history. We don't cast blame but ensure that what happened is never repeated. Tonight, as we mourn what is lost and turn our eyes to the future towards the world we wish to build for our children, a world unsustained by the daily evils of bigotry and intolerance, where human rights are respected, and where all people are able to pursue their lives in dignity and security, let us renew our shared resolve to prevent future atrocities from occurring anywhere in the world, and let us pursue healing and reconciliation for all the people of the world. We honor those Armenians who perished in the genocide that began 106 years ago." It's a lovely sentiment to end my comments on.
Yeah. Thank you very much, and, you know, it certainly is a reminder that when we forget about history, history repeats itself, and I think it's a thought we cannot let go of. So, thank you. Bob?
Thank you, your honor. This is running a little long here. I'll pass with any additional comments this meeting.
Okay. And Lisa?
I will echo Mr. Scott. I have no update this evening. Thank you.
Okay. I just have a couple of quick items. One, Mr. Greason, myself, and Amy Shrimp will be going, joining about 100 other area leaders in the annual fly-in in Washington, D.C. next week, and this is an opportunity for all of us to meet with our state, with our federal representatives, and encourage some of the very things that you have brought up here tonight. Jill, I appreciate that, and it's really just a wonderful opportunity to get to know the people that we, that live around us, that, you know, interplay with us, and that we, we are part of our larger Miami Valley community, so I'm looking forward to that. Jackie already mentioned the party with a purpose, but I'm just going to make an additional plug. If you don't remember, the proceeds from this charitable event go to Bridget's Path, which is for babies who are born addicted, and we, we have one of two facilities in the entire country located right here in Kettering to take care of these kids, and they will benefit. We have absolutely awesome gifts that are being pulled together by the committee. African Safari, haven't seen that one on anyone's list before. The little party bus that Jackie's putting together. We're having a dinner at my house, and I mention that not because it's at my house, but because Tom Perry, who is a local dentist, an oral surgeon, and is well-known for his outdoor cooking, cooks an entire gourmet meal over an outdoor fire pit, is going to be doing the cooking at my house, and looking forward to people with a lot of fun and adventure in their spirit. Is the dog going to be there? I might lock him in the bedroom, but I know him. He'll get out, but there's just, there's just a lot of really interesting things, and thanks to the Kettering Rotary for putting it together. People keep saying, but I didn't get an invitation. You don't need an invitation. You just need to go to ketteringrotary.com and sign up for Party with a Purpose. Get your tickets that way, and you can do, as Jackie mentioned, bidding online, so even if you don't go to the party, you can still have dinner at my house. So, all right, with that, our next, our next scheduled meeting is going to be, okay, I can never find the date on here, April 25, and this meeting is adjourned.